All right, there we go. If everybody's ready. If everybody's ready, we'll go ahead and get started in our committee meetings. Let me turn my sound down here. All righty, this evening, we have six first readings, no second, third, or pending. We'll move right into the finance committee, Jim.
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
We will open the finance committee meeting at 6:04, and we will start with a resolution authorizing New Franklin to enter into an agreement with Tim Lawley Chevrolet Incorporated for two 2021 Chevrolet Tahoe four by four vehicles for the police department and declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage. And we've always had in our budgets to keep our police vehicles up to date. We had a program buy two, buy one, buy two, that type of thing. In 2017, I believe, we bought two. In 2018, we didn't buy any. 2019, we bought two, and this year, we're looking to buy two again. These are part of our budget. We get the state bid pricing. Total price is going to be eighty-six thousand three hundred sixty-six dollars, and that includes a lot of the lights and wiring and stuff like that that in the past has been extra. So, I thought I saw Captain Bickett. Yep. Hey, what would you like to share with us?
Not too much. These are the same that we currently have. We're really happy. Tim Law does a great job. Everything's upfitted right when we pick it up. There's no problem with getting there. The radio and the computer we already have this past summer, and we got two extra, so it's really no more. Either in the radios or. So it's pretty cut and dry on my end, as far as what we're getting.
You've also gave us a list of our current vehicles and the mileage and everything. And two, four, six, eight, ten, this will bring us up to twelve. I'm guessing we're not looking to get rid of any vehicles this time?
Well, we still have two Ford. Those will be out of service.
I'm sorry. The two what?
Ford Crown Victorias.
Okay.
They're no longer.
So they're not on the list?
No, they're gonna be.
Okay. Questions from anybody else?
Yes, Jim, did I understand you to say this is not going to be replacements? This is actually just too new, and it'll be added to. Am I counting nine? Nine cars that we have a list of?
Four, six, eight. I count in ten.
Ten.
This will bring us up to twelve after Crown Victoria. Where's our list you have?
It sounds like we were at twelve, but these Crown Vics are gonna, the Crown Vics are gonna roll off, so we'll be back at twelve.
Right, right, it'll be twelve total.
Go ahead.
We have the money for this in the budget?
Yes. Correct, Susan?
Yes, that's correct.
Anyone else?
I should add, not everybody's looking at the list, but of those, the nine on the list, and then when they've got the two Crown Vics. And when I say nine, the tenth car is the police resource, the school resource officer. But so of the nine that are on the, currently on the road, let's see, five of those are over a hundred thousand miles. In fact, they're all over a hundred and twenty thousand or more. And then there's another one with ninety-seven thousand miles, another one with ninety-one thousand miles, so it's, that's one more factor, one more reason we wanted to go to two this year.
Yeah, and just to, I guess, elaborate here, with the two cars, we'll have five newer car. And those will be split between our timers, two guys per car. And then we'll have three cars, but forty, forty-one and forty-three will be divided timers. And then cars thirty, seventy-six will be our back. Memorial Day car, ours guys used to go to quarter. Or if we, that's how it'll be divided up.
Dan, I apologize, honey. You broke up on me. Can everybody else hear him very well?
He's breaking up a little bit, but I was able to read between the lines.
Okay, sorry. I was just gonna run.
Your audio's not good, Dan.
It's okay, we're gonna have to skip.
Yeah, sorry, I'm not sure why it's echoing. Is that any better?
It is much better, yes.
I just turned it down, I don't know.
It works wonderfully.
I guess just to repeat what I said, the way the cars we've broken down is the five newest cars, the two new ones will be ten part timer, yeah, ten part timers, two guys per car. Cars forty-three, forty-one, forty, those three divided, seven part timers, they'll share those three cars. And then the remaining three we use for Fourth of July, Memorial Day, any kind of special events or marathons. And just as a backup car, if a car ever goes down.
Thank you.
That's kind of how it's broken up.
Anyone else? Again, this is a part of our budget. We planned on this, and unless there's a question or concern, I'm okay with waving the three readings on this.
Fine with that, Jim.
Thank you, thank you, Captain Bickett, for coming in tonight.
Oh, sure.
He can be amused at this point, I would say. I don't think, that's the only police thing we got, I think, isn't it?
I believe so.
Okay. All right, Captain Bickett, you're off duty, at least off this duty.
Thank you. Captain.
All right, we'll see you guys.
Okay, bye.
Nexus twenty-one R twelve, a resolution to authorize approval of a proposal from Marlboro Supply for drainage pipe for the New Franklin Service Department projects and declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage.
Hey Jim, I think, I think that's Judy's committee, right?
Oh, it is, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I'm just used to doing it all.
That's okay. You're gonna have to slow your roll, Jim, a little bit.
Okay, I'll slow down for you, David.
All right, thank you.
Nexus Resolution two-one R one-three, you good?
All right.
A resolution to authorize approval of a proposal from Wolf Brothers Supply Incorporated for a standby generator at the New Franklin Service Garage and declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage. This is for a Generac eighty kilowatt generator. The price is twenty-three thousand three hundred thirty-six dollars. This is something that's been needed at the service department and service garage for, for a few years now. We probably should have done it a few years ago. And, and I think it's important that we have it there when, when there's a natural emergency, we need our service department, and we need them to be able to do their job and communicate and, and everything, everything else that goes with it. The price at twenty-three, three thirty-six for this particular model is cheaper than any other price that I was able to find. Just like if you're trying to find some piece of electronics, the price is the same everywhere you go, and the price is twenty-three, nine seventeen everywhere else. So we're saving about six hundred dollars off this model. I understand the service garage is ready for, pretty much ready to do it. When, when we added on, they put in the wiring for it ahead of time with the plan that this would eventually come, so we're just going to need to have a cement pad put in place that they can do on their own, and, and in a way, just kind of plug it in. All the wiring and connections are already there for us, so installation is going to be minimal for us, so the twenty-three, three, three, six is a pretty accurate number for this. Questions, comments?
Nope.
Okay. What do you guys want to do? It's twenty-three thousand for this generator. Do you want to wave to three or move on? The quote we have is good until the end of March, so we can take another reading if you want, or if you're all comfortable, we can move forward with this, which I think.
If I could add, what we're told is it's gonna be a while before we can get this from the time we order. That it might be three or four months, so, you know, if this was in stock, certainly, you, you know, take more readings, but if everybody's comfortable, it would be good to get this one done today so we can get it ordered, so we can get it in.
I'm good.
Anybody else?
We have money for this in the budget?
Yes.
Do we have money for this in the budget?
Yes, we do.
Thank you, Susan.
Okay, we'll ask to wave the three on that one. Next, if it's me, it is me.
Yeah.
Twenty-one R sixteen, a resolution authorizing New Franklin to enter into an agreement with Motorola Solutions for the purchase of nine Motorola APX XE radios and accessories and declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage. And this is going to be for our fire department, a total of thirty-six, seven, thirty-eight point eight-five. I, I know, back in November, we applied for a grant, the Marx Grant, the twenty-twenty-one Marx Grant for this. So, are, did we get the grant, A, and B, is it just that we need these radios, and because we're currently, as Chief Leslie mentioned, back in November, our radios are ten, fifteen years old, and they're desperate need of being replaced. And just so happens that Chief Leslie is here with us tonight, so take it away, chief.
Well, thank you, thank you very much. Yes, you are correct, we did apply back in November. We did not get the grant. There were, that I'm aware of, that I found, three departments in Summit County that had applied for the grant, none of the three were awarded the grant. When a little further digging, we found that basically the grant priorities are those departments that are not currently on the Mark system. All of Summit County right now is on the Mark system, so they're, they're, they're kind of trying to funnel that money, this is from what I've heard, they're trying to funnel that money towards the departments, mainly in the south reach, south, southern half of the state that, that don't have the, the radio system. So it's not, their, their priority is not replacement of radios, but more adding the new radios onto the system for those departments. So, that being said, we did talk to BNC and talk to Motorola, and we got them to agree that if we were to purchase the radios, they would go ahead and honor the price quote they gave us for the, the grant price, which was a special price, so that would save us, it actually saves us fourteen thousand four hundred dollars off what would be the normal price of these radios. So, so that's why I'm here tonight to ask that we can purchase these radios. I do have the money in my budget. The radios we're currently using, like you said, Mr. Cots, are anywhere between ten and fifteen years old, possibly, a few of them are older than that. As they go out of service, we replace them on the system with other fifteen-year-old radios that don't. So we're replacing old radios with old radios, basically. And normally, when they go out of service, it's usually while we're on a call, and so that's not very good, so we're having some, we're beginning to see some real reliability issues with them. So that's why we're thinking that now would be the time to go ahead and just purchase these new radios. The others, the other key part of that, too, is with this joint dispatch, all of our radios are going to have to be touched. And when I say touched, they're all going to have to be reprogrammed. So our thought was, too, is if we got these radios ordered now, they could, we could have them in time to get them all done at one time by, by Motorola, so they're all programmed at that time, and that way, we wouldn't have, have to have them come back and reprogram radios at a second time. So, not that that necessarily would, would save us money, but it would at least, it would, it would be more of a convenience for us to get them all done at one time, so.
The grant, the grant price saves us about fourteen thousand.
Correct, fourteen thousand four hundred. Yeah. And I was, I was quite surprised that they were going to, that they were gonna actually honor that price, because that's about half the price of what the normal radio would cost.
That's excellent.
Yeah.
So, how many radios? I, I don't know, I guess, I'm looking at, how many radios do we have? We're buying nine to replace some that, that are old and, and not working. Are, are we on, do we need to be on some type of program to start replacing these other radios?
That's why, that's a good question. That's why it's only nine, because we have been replacing radios over time. So we replaced the officer radios here about seven years ago. We got all of the officers' new radios, and then those radios moved down, and we're putting vehicles, and, and then so they, they have been, we've been replacing them over time. We actually have a total of twenty-six radios that we pay for through the department. And those radios are both mobiles and portables. Now, some of those are fire port mobiles or, or base station mobiles that are in dispatch. Some of them are in the vehicles, some of them are portables. It's a mix. So, dispatch even carries a portable just as a backup, so. But we have been trying to replace them a little bit at a time. These are actually the last, the last nine that are this old.
Well, you mentioned that it was seven years ago. And in a couple of years, those are going to be, as you qualify now, ten years old and old. So should we be on a more regular basis, maybe, to get five or six radios every couple of years?
Um, yeah, I, I mean, I'm sure it wouldn't hurt to do that. I mean, that's a, that's a good idea. We can look into that. Like I said, it's been coming up where the pricing, you know, you're talking six thousand dollars a radio, that it gets, it gets pretty hefty.
Sure.
And they have been, you know, up until now, they've been good. They've really worked out well for us. So we can look at that down the road to possibly doing that a couple of years.
Okay, questions?
Chief, I have one. Do the, do the same radio work for the police and fire, or is this, that's what I was, okay, thank you.
Depending on how it's programmed. It, it has to be programmed, obviously, with their talk groups or their channels in it, but yeah, they're, they're basically, they're in eight hundred megahertz on the trunk system for the county. They can be, they can be set up either way.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments? No, I think as Chief Leslie said, this is a good opportunity for us. We're saving fourteen thousand four hundred dollars, and we're certainly appreciative of the company to, to honor that price for us. They certainly didn't have to. And, and they did, so I, I think, I'd like to see us move forward with this and wave the three if others are comfortable with that.
I'm fine.
Okay. Man, we will ask to wave the three on this also, and I believe that is my involvement for this evening. Have a nice evening, folks. I'll see you later. Six twenty-three, closing the finance committee.
All right, thank you, Jim. Move into Streets and Drainage, Judy.
Thank you. I'll call the meeting to order at six twenty-three. Resolution number twenty-one R twelve. A resolution to authorize approval of a proposal from Marlboro Supply for drainage pipe for the New Franklin Service Department projects and declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage. And that price is thirteen thousand six hundred twenty-one dollars and fifty-five cents. I only saw one estimate there. Paul, did we have more than one estimate, or was this just the least expensive?
I think both. This was the least expensive, and, and I think we just got one more estimate, and Brian's here, he can answer that question better, but primarily, we got a lot of projects in the works. We're doing some things as they come up in concert with some of the work that, that Aqua's doing, so that's why we're getting into this purchase at this time. And Brian, I, we've, Brian, you can tell us a little bit more about the quotes and Marlboro Supply.
Marlboro Supply is a lot cheaper than I just got, where we usually buy the pipe is discount drain, and that list that you're seeing is even more pipe than what I asked from discount drain to quote, so when I priced the exact same amount of pipe, it was like four thousand dollars cheaper, so that's why I'm going with that company.
Now, Brian, would this be enough pipe to see you through how long?
Not very long. It's just doing a few areas. I'll probably be buying more throughout the year.
But this is what we need now?
Yes.
And of course, when it, I'm sorry, Judy, when it exceeds ten thousand dollars, that's why we need to come to you, so I'm sure there's other times that, you know, he buys a pipe, but it just doesn't, doesn't press that ten thousand dollar figure, so that's why we don't get this every time he buys pipe.
But, but this is actually about four thousand dollars less expensive. Is that what you said, Brian?
Yes, correct.
Does anyone have any questions on this?
I would just echo kind of what Brian was saying, that, yeah, Marlboro Supply substantially cheaper than all the other surrounding places, and free delivery as well, if I recall, so, so I think, yeah, it's a great, great company to work with.
So I'm thinking we're going to make a motion to waive the three readings tonight, unless someone has a problem with it. And I will close the meeting at six twenty-six.
All right, thank you, Judy. We'll move to community development, Andy.
Open community development at six twenty-six. Resolution twenty-one R fourteen. A resolution authorizing New Franklin to enter into a three-year extension of the agreement with Manchester Local Schools for Police Services and declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage. So this is an increase from the previous, what we passed in twenty eighteen. So that was a thirty thousand dollar a year agreement, and this is on to a forty thousand. So Mayor, I have a question, is are the, the school system, they're paying for, they're paying us for this service?
Yes, yeah, Susan can clarify that, but yeah, we bill them, and I can't remember if they pay us quarterly or annually or whatever, but yeah, they pay us. Over the first three years, they paid the thirty thousand a year. And the superintendent came to me, and this expires in, in July, at the end of June, so they're happy with it. I've talked with Chief Davidson. I let, I see I let Captain Bickett off the hook a little bit early, and I'm sorry about that, but I did talk with Chief Davidson about it, and the consensus there is that there really is a mutual benefit to this from, for a lot of, you know, PR would be the least of them, you know, but that's, that helps, but, and we happen to have a guy who's just perfect for it, as, as most of you know. So, and then we, you know, I can tell you that investigations have crossed my desk, where information, intel has come to us as a result of the relationships that, that are built in those buildings, so it's, I think it's a win-win, and, and I know that the chief supports this as well.
Anyone have any questions about this?
No.
Right, we, we will assume to wave the three on that one tonight. Moving on to twenty-one R fifteen, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Aqua Ohio and declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage. This is essentially a, a new twenty-year deal. I'll let you get into it more with all your details. I'm sure you have something exciting to tell us about it.
Well, yeah, thank you. Boy, the nutshell is, and we've alluded to it a couple of different times, we had a ten-year, we signed a ten-year agreement back in two thousand and nine. And the, there was an effort to bring water up State Route six nineteen, and there just was no interest. And basically, that was about all that happened with that contract. And then we discussions were revived in two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen. We saw a need, we had businesses that needed water up on ninety-three, we sat back down with Aqua again, we had already sat down with them in two thousand eighteen, and, and Barb and, and Canal Fulton, because those are the possible, those were the entities where we could get water. And Canal Fulton, too, too far away, way too expensive. Barb was interested in jets, and it just didn't serve our purpose, because the whole purpose for us was to try to put ourselves in a position where we can eventually attract some businesses and, and generate some revenue. And satisfy existing businesses without losing any of that tax revenue to a jet, so it was Aqua. And, and we worked out an agreement to, to get a line up to State Route ninety-three. And, and then we found a way to, we found that there could, there was potential money available through the Ohio EPA for this four million dollar project. And those discussions went on for about a year, and trips to Columbus, et cetera. We, as we announced back in the fall, we're one of the two awards in Ohio from the Ohio EPA for the principal forgiveness, and so now the four million dollar project became a two million dollar project. And we felt it important enough that the city commit to five hundred thousand of that. Aqua, under the original contract in oh-nine, had committed to a million dollars on, on an initial project. And we were able to kind of talk them up to one point five million, but couldn't get them any farther than that, and so with this four million dollar project, we said, well, that's a city. We would, I would have been coming to you and saying, listen, I'm gonna ask you to approve five hundred, taking on five hundred thousand dollars worth of debt over twenty years. And, and to recoup that from, from, if and when property owners sign on and decide to take the water. That's where things were, and then the, the discussions went on to, well, just since we're just kind of starting, could we get to a twenty-year contract? Why don't we just start over? And that seemed to make sense, but we also had a discussion, well, you know, what else can you do for us? And, and I'm not, I'm not gonna say this was arm wrestling, I'm just gonna say that, that there was a consensus that maybe we could do something that was better serve the city. And what we came up with was that Aqua would, would service the entire two million dollar debt. And that there would be no obligation, no financial obligation whatsoever for the city of New Franklin for this four million dollar project. In addition, no assessments whatsoever for any residents of New Franklin, and no mandatory tie-ins for anybody in New Franklin. Strictly, the water's coming, if you want to take advantage of it, you can. If you don't, you don't have to. And, and with that in mind, they said, you know, can we start this twenty years over again? And, and so that's, and my thought was yes, and, and we ironed out a few little ticks in the contract that I'm not gonna bore you with, but they were a little bit problematic, and we straightened those out. We're already talking about potential future phases with Aqua, so we're excited. And, and, and I'm not, and, and their twenty-year contract, it's a right of first refusal. And, and what this means is, if we're on the west side, and we want to get water to Cleveland, Mass. on road, and Barb is there, and they can give it to us, and we gotta put that on, you know, we gotta give Aqua a shot at it, and if, if they're not, if they can't do it, then we can, you know, our hands aren't tied, so we're not giving away a whole lot in terms of this right of refusal, but I think we got quite a bit. And so there, there's no particular urgency on this, we, you know, it's, it's sort of an agreement after the fact. We've talked to council about it throughout. They're out, they're out there digging. So, you know, if, if there's a feel, if, if anyone feels you need more time to assess it, by all means, we can take more time, but we've been talking about it a long time, and if you're comfortable with it, you could proceed tonight.
Yeah, I, I do applaud your persistent negotiating skills with them. I think that's a, it's an incredible thing that we're, we're bringing in. Does anyone have any questions or concerns about it? Does anyone have any questions or concerns about it?
No, I have no problem with waiving it, I mean, it's, they, they stepped way up on this one, so I would, I would be fine with waving the three readings and vote on this this evening.
I, I agree. Okey-dokey, we will close at six thirty-four.
Thank you, Andy. All right, I think that takes care of all our legislation. No supplemental agenda tonight, that's real nice. All right, anybody have anything for their committees they'd like to discuss while we're in committee? Alrighty then, I'm gonna go ahead and, uh, call to order the City of New Franklin Council Meeting this Wednesday, February seventeenth, twenty-twenty-one, we'll call it six thirty-three. We'd all stand for the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance
Right.
To the flag
Of the United States
The United States of America. And to the Republic of which is one nation indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Alrighty, thank you, can we get a roll call, please?
Mr. Cotts?
Nailed it.
Mrs. Jones? We can't hear you.
I think that's a yes.
Yeah. Mr. Fetterman?
Here.
Mr. Hawke?
Here.
Ms. Norris?
Here.
Mr. Stock?
Here, thank you. Uh, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from the regular scheduled meeting of February third, twenty-twenty-one.
Okay.
All right, second, any questions, comments on the minutes? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Jones? Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Hawke?
Yes.
Ms. Norris?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
All right, like to make a motion to approve the financials for January twenty-twenty-one, subject to audit.
Okay.
First and second, discussion, questions? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Jones? Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Hawke?
Yes.
Ms. Norris?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Katie, you have anything? We don't have a big turnout tonight, do we? I don't have anything.
Not a big turnout, uh, we do have one comment, do you want me to read it?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know why I'm not getting it.
Uh, it just says, two weeks ago, the mayor was thinking he might have a Congo Road update at the next council meeting, hoping he does. So, I don't know if you wanna wait for mayor's report?
Hey, I can ju- what do you, we can get that out of the way right now if you want.
Yeah, go ahead, Paul, knock it out.
Yeah, uh, yes, we are, and, uh, it, there are, things appear to be happening, uh, and I think you're aware, there was a rally on Friday, February fifth, a number of the residents showed up and Channel Five was out there and, uh, I sent something that day to, uh, uh, the players here are, uh, Summit County Executive's Office, Summit County Engineers' Office, uh, and, and City of Norton and, uh, communicated with all of them, uh, that day. Uh, and there's a fourth player and that's AMATS. Uh, and what, uh, was, uh, reported was that there are discussions going on to try to fit this in with AMATS funding, it's gonna take some cooperation from the Engineers' Office and also from Summit County Executive. And then Norton is, has, uh, I don't wanna speak for him, but they're, they're a player, a significant player in this as well. Uh, it's just a matter of getting those ducks in a row to get, the, the, the money's there at AMATS and it's a question of, uh, may, I ain't saying the right magic words, uh, so, uh, I was told that, uh, uh, on the, uh, that same day, on the fifth, uh, from Summit County that they were working on it, they had a meeting last week. Uh, they were gonna follow up, um, I, uh, contacted, uh, AMATS. I got a, uh, email from AMATS, uh, today, I asked them what was up, they said, we're working on it, they talked with Josh Slaga last week, they're talking to ODOT about some of the engineers' concerns, uh, and I got something again back from, uh, uh, from Summit County, uh, that, uh, it's getting close. So, we're, we're not gonna count that chicken until it hatches, but, uh, uh, the plan is to make that happen this summer. And, uh, right now it looks, uh, I'm very, very optimistic that, that we're gonna be able to get that done.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I just updated, so that's the only one I got, Katie. Oh, all right, somebody else is watching, great, glad to have you aboard. Alrighty, we're gonna move into our legislation this evening. Uh, just like we had, uh, six first readings, no second, third, or pending. We'll move to resolution number twenty-one dash R eleven, Kelly?
A resolution authorizing New Franklin to enter into an agreement with Tim Lally Chevrolet Incorporated for two two thousand twenty-one Chevrolet Tahoe four-by-four vehicles for the police department and declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage.
This resolution is assigned to the Finance Committee, we move to waive the three readings on twenty-one R eleven.
Second.
We have a first and second, uh, roll call, please.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Hawke?
Yes.
Ms. Norris?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Just give us a thumbs up, Judy. All right.
We move to adopt resolution twenty-one R eleven.
Second.
We have first, second, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Hawke?
Yes.
Ms. Norris?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes, all right, that passes six to zero, thank you, we'll move to resolution number twenty-one dash R dash twelve. Kelly?
A re- a resolution to authorize approval of a proposal from Marlboro Supply and Drainage Pipe for the New Franklin Service Department Projects and declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage.
Uh, Ms. Jones is having communication problems, I'll step in for her and, uh, her committee is asking to waive the three readings on resolution twenty-one R twelve.
Do we have a second? I think Judy gave us a second, and thanks Jim, uh, can we get a roll call, please?
Mr. Hawke?
Yes.
Ms. Norris?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
And the Streets and Drainage Committee will ask you to adopt resolution twenty-one R twelve.
We have a second. Uh, any questions, discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Hawke?
Yes.
Ms. Norris?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones? Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
All right, that passes six to zero, thank you, we'll move to resolution number twenty-one dash R dash thirteen, Kelly?
A resolution to authorize approval of a proposal from Wolf Brothers Supply Incorporated for a standby generator at the New Franklin Service Garage and declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage.
This resolution is assigned to the Finance Committee, we move to waive the three readings on twenty-one R thirteen.
Second.
We have a second, roll call, please.
Ms. Norris?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones? Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Hawke?
Yes.
We move to adopt resolution twenty-one R thirteen.
Second.
First and second, any discussion, questions? Roll call, please.
Ms. Norris?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones? Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Hawke?
Yes.
All right, that passes six to zero, thank you, we'll move to resolution twenty-one dash R dash fourteen, Kelly?
A resolution authorizing New Franklin to enter into a three-year extension of the agreement with the Manchester Local Schools for Police Services and declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage.
This was assigned to Community Development and we, uh, moved to waive the three.
Second, that, we have a first and second, roll call, please.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones? Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Hawke?
Yes.
Ms. Norris?
Yes.
We move to adopt resolution twenty R fourteen.
Second.
First and second, any discussion, questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones? Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Hawke?
Yes.
Ms. Norris?
Yes.
All right, thank you, that passes six to zero, we'll move to resolution twenty-one dash R dash fifteen, Kelly?
A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Aqua Ohio Incorporated and declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage.
This resolution was assigned to Community Development and we moved to waive the three on this one as well.
Second.
We have a first and second, roll call, please.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones? Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Hawke?
Yes.
Ms. Norris?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
We move to adopt twenty R fifteen.
Okay.
Uh, first and second, discussion, comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones? Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Hawke?
Yes.
Ms. Norris?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes, thank you. Go to resolution twenty-one R sixteen, Kelly?
A resolution authorizing New Franklin to enter in an agreement with Motorola Solutions for the purchase of nine Motorola APX XE radios and accessories and declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage.
This resolution is assigned to the Finance Committee, we move to waive the three readings on twenty-one R sixteen.
Second.
Uh, first and second, roll call, please.
Mrs. Jones? Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Hawke?
Yes.
Ms. Norris?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
We move to adopt resolution twenty-one R sixteen.
Second.
Second.
Yeah, first and second, discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Jones? Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Hawke?
Yes.
Ms. Norris?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
All right, that passes six to zero, thank you. Again, no second, third, or pending, move into our favorite part of the meeting, the mayor's report.
Boy, uh, hey, uh, first of all, uh, I was, uh, remiss. We let Captain Bickett go right away and I've kept Chief Leslie and, and Brian tied up here, so I apologize for that. Uh, certainly, I, I think you two can excuse yourselves, you're more than welcome to stick around for this tenevating report, but you can check out if you want to.
You let us go right at the first, at the best part.
Yeah, all right, well, good job, Ben. Uh, and I don't, hopefully, I don't have too much, I, I wanna let you know that things are moving forward with the, uh, uh, with the cog. And, uh, meetings are taking place, we had, it's, uh, another board meeting with, uh, Mayor Newt Bower last Friday. The groundwork is being laid, contracts are being considered. Um, policy manuals, uh, being drafted and, and, uh, um, it's, it's, uh, things are moving just, I think, at a really good pace. Uh, right now, May eleventh is, it is indicated as a kind of go-live date for a variety of technical reasons. Um, the, uh, all budgets, this, this cog, as you know, is a, is a political, is a, a, a separate entity. Um, and, uh, like all in the state, it has to have its budget, um, approved by May thirty, or March thirty-first. Think I'm right about that one, Susan, you're nine?
First.
April first, okay, so, uh, they're working on that budget. We anticipate then there'll be a call for some additional funding, um, when we get into the second quarter, but, you know, we'll, we'll let everybody know that uh, going in. And, uh, all in all, it, it looks like it's going well. Um, the, the Clinton fire contract expires October third. We've had some discussions with them, that was a three-year, we, we share that joint station down there. Clinton is considering a variety of things themselves, it appears they're gonna have a levy on the ballot, they may wanna fly solo with that department. Uh, and, uh, there's some issues we would, we would need to address if we're gonna go another three years with them. Um, but, uh, right now, the kind of the ball's in their court, they're gonna let us know in the next couple of weeks whether or not they're, if they even wanna talk about an extension, or whether they're gonna say, listen, they, they're gonna go on their own, so we're preparing for either one of those eventualities or possibilities, uh, and, uh, from, uh, from our perspective, if for some reason, uh, we don't go forward with, uh, with Clinton at that station, we will be coming to you with the, uh, funding, well, I'll advise you, I have to think, what, you know, we, whether it's something council would have to approve, but we certainly want to watch you on board with it of reopening the Melody Village Station. Uh, so, one way or another, we're gonna make sure we got service on the west side of the tracks. Uh, and, and, uh, so we've, we've, we're already starting those discussions, doing some pricing, et cetera. Um, it costs us a little bit more if we have to do that, on the other hand, we might end up with a better product, so uh, we'll get into more details going forward, we got some time, but I just wanted to give you a heads up on that one. And I want to assure everybody on the west side, we will have a station on the west side, period. Um, Congo Road Bridge, we already talked about, Better Road Bridge is a million-dollar project that's gonna happen this summer. Uh, the city share right now stands at a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. Uh, we have, uh, uh, applied for, uh, further grant funding through, uh, Ohio Public Works. And we've gotten past the first round and the scoring indicates that we're in the running for seventy-seven thousand dollars from them. So, uh, we expect to know that, uh, within the next thirty, forty-five days. Uh, so, that would be beautiful, uh, so we're trying to scramble up some more money there. Uh, the paving, the bid packages, uh, we expect those will go out this Friday uh, and, uh, be open on March the eighth, and we'll find out what kind of pricing we can get and, and just how many roads we can pave, so, uh, uh, we will obviously be reporting back to you, the timing on that, it'll be March seventeenth before we are able to put something in front of you to approve a bid, um, since, uh, that's where our meetings fall in March. Uh, we've talked with the, uh, Manchester Local Schools about, uh, as you know, the Parks Commission has decided to move forward with tennis courts. Uh, we've engaged in, it, have an extensive discussions between Kevin Noble and the United States Tennis Association who provides a variety of services, um, uh, for planning a- and also funding. So, he's having those discussions, meanwhile, I talked with, uh, uh, the Manchester Schools about donating the, the land. Uh, we're getting a survey done right now, they, they are, uh, at this point are willing to do that. Um, we will, uh, uh, we will certainly make the courts available for the school teams uh, for, uh, any of the school districts, uh, in, in the community, I've told you before that, right now, I don't think Northwest has tennis, I think Norton has courts, I'm told. Uh, and Coventry probably would want to take advantage of these, they either go to Barbton or they come out to us, but we, we'll make it available for the schools, particularly for the Manchester Schools, uh, in lieu of the, uh, donation of the land. we, we'll make it available for the schools, particularly for the Manchester Schools, uh, in lieu of the, uh, donation of the land. Um, and the last thing I have is, uh, we have, we are, we have formed, or, you know, we're having an organizational meeting tomorrow night for the Citizens Advisory Group, and you, you, I think you probably saw that on Facebook, et cetera. We had a number of people that had some interest about what's going on in the city. We said, well, let's put a group together. Uh, we asked for interested people. There's about twenty or twenty-one of them. Uh, a, a pretty nice, uh, cross-section of the community. Uh, so, we will have our initial meeting tomorrow night at six PM by Zoom. Uh, if, uh, if you are interested in attending, just shoot Katie an email, and she'll send you the link. Uh, and, um, and the, the purpose that we set out for this group is basically to, for input, uh, so that we can share information with citizens, uh, and, and get their, uh, get their input, get their, their thoughts, get their objections, get their suggestions, uh, and ultimate purpose being to i- i- make sure that the lines of communication are open between the, uh, the stakeholders and, and the city, and as we, uh, a- as we continue to discuss, uh, development. So, um, that is happening tomorrow night at six, and that's all I got.
All right, thank you, Paul. Susan, Finance?
Just wanted to update you that I had, did email yesterday. I should all have it in your email. Um, the Certificate of Estimated Resources, the first one with our actual balances in it, um, that was also, and also the revenue and expense spreadsheets. These are the, this is the same information that goes out to the chiefs that they work on to develop their, uh, annual appropriations or their budget. So, you've got all that same information right up front, so that you can take a look at it. I do the spreadsheets only because VIP does not give you more than a couple of years glance, so I give you more than that with a spreadsheet. Um, we are that, now in the process, now that that information has been out to the departments, the department heads are now going to be setting up meetings between myself and the mayor, um, to go over their budgets and what their plans are for this coming year, which is what we normally do. And then, as soon as that is done, I will send you out the spreadsheet, the large spreadsheet, that has both the, um, the, uh, draft of the appropriations, as well as the, the temporary appropriations, and it also has like five years of expenses, so that you can see it, the whole picture at a glance, and get some idea of any questions that you might have regarding how we came up with those numbers beforehand. The last thing I do after that, because I think you having that information, at least you can look at it, and you can call if you have any questions, talk to your department heads if you need to, whatever you have to do. Um, the last thing I will do is put it into resolution form, and then you will have that before the, the, uh, the March seventeenth meeting, because that's the last meeting before the deadline to, to, um, to actually pass the annual appropriations. As I said earlier, it's the April first deadline, and how our meetings fall this year. Obviously, the thir- the seventeenth is the last meeting before the deadline, so. Um, if you have any questions about those, or you need to review them, please call. Got lots of time to do it if we need to do it, and, um, you've got a lot of information, so if you have any questions, please let me know. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Move into old business. Any old business? No old business. All right, new business?
I wanna ask about the Memorial Day Parade and what thoughts we're having this year for thinking that we can get that done.
Uh, I didn't hear the last part, Mr. Fetterman.
Uh, if we're planning on having a Memorial Day Parade this year?
Thank you. Uh, as of now, the answer is yes. Uh, we're, we're gonna do the planning. Um, it's gonna depend on, uh, well, a couple of things, naturally. First of all, do we have participants? Uh, and then, second of all, is, uh, what's going on with the, you know, with, with COVID? Um, it, it seems to me it's an event, it's an outdoor event that we could, you know, we're just gonna have to, we're just gonna, we're gonna plan it, and we're gonna hope for the best. Uh, and, uh, that weekend, we are also going forward with planning for an event on Sunday of Memorial Day weekend. Uh, our, uh, kickoff event at the Tudor House, uh, which has a theme to it. And, um, and, um, I'm gonna invite you to guess the theme, because I can't immediately remember what it is, but maybe Katie remembers. Do you remember, Katie?
Sail into summer.
Sail into summer, there you go. Uh, so, it, it really just a typical, I'm, I'm happy to say a typical Tudor House event. Well, we'll have some food out there, some food trucks, and some music, and some games, and come on out and, and, you know, e- enjoy the Tudor House, and enjoy the lake, and enjoy the company of each other. Uh, so, we're trying to stay optimistic. We're gonna, we're gonna put, do the planning on that, uh, but I, when we get in, you know, we get maybe sixty days out, I think we'll have a better idea, but, uh, we're hopeful.
Sounds good, thank you.
Any other new business? All right, I have some new business. It could be considered old, 'cause I brought it up, but I just wanna address some comments on, you know, we, I've been talking about a contractor registration. Just wanna address some of the comments from our email. You know, one of them was, as a registered contractor, you know, I fail to see the benefit of the city and the residents. You know, this, we're not trying to, you know, I'm not trying to reinvent the wheel here. It's to see who's working in our community. It's not a money issue, 'cause of some of the things, you're gonna be in and out. It's not gonna be a tax thing. The vo- the registration isn't gonna be a large fee. It's to protect our citizens, and there's different, different reasons for that. They're talking about the email address being licensed in the city of, in the state of Ohio. Well, as far as trades to be licensed into Ohio are electricians, plumbers, fire sprinkler fitters, HVAC, and elevator operators and constructors. So, the guy that's roofing your house does not need to be licensed in the state of Ohio. The guy putting vinyl siding on your house does not need to be registered or licensed in the state of Ohio. So, that brings some issues of, you know, we're looking out to see, we're not trying to put a list together who we prefer. What we're trying to do is say, listen, if you're gonna work in our community, you're gonna be light, you're gonna be insured, and you're gonna be bonded, okay? That protects our citizens as far as, if, you know, something goes wrong with their house, they're roofing their house, some catastrophe happens, something catches fire, siding, whatever, you know, you're gonna know that that contractor is licensed to work there. And he's gonna have, not licensed, basically, registered, and he's gonna have insurance. So, a lot of that has to do with how we set up the legislation, and it, it's all over the board everywhere. Another thing is, you know, the contractors that do things right, that pay their bonds, pay their insurances, pay workers' comp on their employees, they have no problem with that, 'cause now, when they're bidding jobs in our community, they know they're on a level playing field with everybody else. They don't got a guy that's paying cash to their guys. You know, so, it's, it's, it's not a money grab. It has nothing to do with, you know, collecting in, uh, you know, through Rita, because if you're coming in and doing a roof, you might be here two days. You, you wouldn't even have to pay taxes to the City of New Franklin. But it does protect our citizens. I mean, the Village of Clinton, I gotta get more into theirs. They, they had a twenty-five-dollar registration fee. I did hear that they were voting on raising it to a hundred. So, anyhow, we're gonna look more into it, you know, and as far as the qualification for the registration, it could be, you know, you gotta carry this much insurance, you gotta have a bond. But as far as the licenses go, a guy doing your roof don't need it. So, that comment that it, you know, it don't see how it's gonna help. If you're a roofing contractor, you don't need to be licensed to the state of Ohio. So, anyhow, we're gonna look more into it, and I'm gonna bring more to everybody once we get a little bit more into it. It's not something I'm trying to push through right now. I just wanna look more into it, so. That is some of my comments and my new business on that, uh, email we received. Any questions for me on that? All right, any other new business? All right, we do have a comment that somebody wants to thank the road department for a great job with the roads so far this winter, and I agree, they've been awesome. Anyone else? That's all I see. Katie, see anything else? How was our turnout tonight?
Good, I saw it up to eighteen.
Woo! It's a little colder. I got two heaters going on tonight. It's a little colder out here. So, all right, Paul, executive session?
No, sir.
All right, well, it's good seeing everybody. Stay safe, and we'll, the next meeting will be, uh, March third. So, we'll see y'all then. Good night. Oh, make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Again, thank you much. We'll see y'all.